And so what we're going to do is we're going to start off with one of our Poor People's Campaign songs. And Tay, kick us off.
I'd like. Everybody's got a right to live. Everybody's got a right to live. And we are here to fight because housing is the right. Oh, everybody's got the right to live. Everybody's got a right to dream. Everybody's got a right to dream. And we are here to fight because housing is the right. Oh, everybody's got a right to dream. Everybody's got a right to a home. Everybody's got a right to a home. And we are here to fight because housing is the right. Oh, everybody's got the right to a home. Everybody's got a right to live. Everybody's got a right to live. And we are here to fight because housing is the right. Oh, everybody's got a right to live.
Love it. Love it. Thank you to the Washington Poor People's Campaign Coordinating Committee member, Tay Phoenix, for leading us in one of the Poor People's Campaign's signature songs, "Everybody Has A Right To Live." We know that music has always played an important role in many movements, especially the civil rights movement. So the Poor People's Campaign continues with that tradition in this movement. Greetings. My name is Reverend Bianca Davis Lovelace, and I serve as the Chair of the Washington State Poor People's Campaign and serve as the Executive Director of Reach Renton.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name's Rami Garcia, and I joined the Washington State Poor People's Campaign Coordinating Committee in 2019. And I am also a member of Lelo, which stands for Legacy of Equality Leadership Organizing, as well as a union activist with the WFSC or Washington Federation of State Employees Local 843. And I'll share some words about that a little bit later. Thank you and look forward to having y'all having this conversation.
We begin tonight's program with two Washington State Poor People's Campaign traditions. First, we acknowledge that we are on stolen land. Many of you who are attending this town hall are from King County. So we acknowledge that we are on Duwamish territory. We have others who are in attendance who live in other parts of the state. So I ask that you acknowledge the territory in which you reside quietly and maybe even in the chat box. We also acknowledge that this country was built on stolen labor. So today, we honor the African ancestors from West and Central Africa whose labor was exploited and used to build this country, to build this country. Therefore, we acknowledge both those who were impacted by stolen land and stolen labor. Next, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge our organizers and sponsors for this event today. First, we would like to thank our organizers at Reach Renton, which stands for Renton Ecumenical Association of Churches. Reach is an organization that provides access to basic resources for both homeless families and the chronically homeless. Reach provides 24-hour shelter for families experiencing homelessness. Reach also provides meals for breakfast and weekend dinners for those experiencing food insecurity. We would also like to thank Washington State Poor People's Campaign for organizing this event. The National Poor People's Campaign began in 1968 and was founded by the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and it is rooted in the fundamental belief that a movement must confront the interlocking evils of systemic racism, poverty, ecological devastation, militarism, and the war economy, and a distorted moral narrative of religious nationalism. We believe that a movement led by those impacted by the interlocking social issues, the issues there that we mentioned earlier, can shift the moral narrative, impact policies, and elections at every level of government. The Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s vision continues with over 40 state chapters across the country, and it is led nationally by the Reverend Dr. William Barber and Reverend Liz Theo Harris. I would like to remind you all that yesterday was the 53rd anniversary of the assassination of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Let me repeat that. Yesterday was the 53rd anniversary of the assassination of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. So today's event is extra special because we are continuing his legacy and fighting against poverty and systemic racism with this movement.
All right. Thank you, Bianca. I'd like to share the other two groups that are co-sponsoring today. First is the Legacy of Equality Leadership Organizing, of which I'm also a member. Lelo waged successful political and legal fights for Black workers in the trade unions, Asian workers in the cannery, canneries, and Latinx farm workers. And that had resulted in the improvement of working conditions and benefits for thousands of workers. Through an organizing, realizing, relicensing program, Lelo has also assisted hundreds of low-income and workers of color to obtain their suspended driver's license. Lelo continues to build efforts to hold sound transit accountable in hiring workers of color, low-income, and women, and local workers. Lelo promotes solidarity through the Tyree Scott Worker-to-Worker Program as a way to find an alternative to the corporate capitalist greed. And lastly, Lelo has the Food Co-op Program that promotes healthy and affordable food, and it's also supporting a local farmer in eastern Washington. Secondly, I'd like to just say briefly about the Washington Federation of State Employees Local 843, of which I'm a member. Local 843 is one of over 50 locals of the statewide Ask Me, Washington Federation of State Employees Council 28. Both my statewide Council 28 and Local 843 Union are community partners with the PPC. We are the people who provide the services to residents who come to the welfare offices. Local 843 represents over 1,200 human services workers in King County in agencies such as the Economic Services Administration, the Department of Children and Family Youth Services, Home and Community Services, Division of Disability of Determination. Local 843 is part of the safety net serving the poor and low-income King County residents. And we have a long track record of working with other labor and community organizers across the King County area for racial and economic justice.
We would like to thank Seattle Indivisible for co-sponsoring this event. Seattle Indivisible is a group focused on influencing members of Congress via the grassroots method to help enact progressive change at the federal level. Their focus is rooted in resisting racism, authoritarianism, and corruption in government and seeks to resist any agenda that espouses those principles.
All right, just moving on now. I'd like to just cover some basic ground rules here for tonight's town hall conversations. And as many of you know, due to the number of participants for this event, we all will be muted and will remain muted except for the core speakers and also the co-hosts. Secondly, the question and Q&amp;A portion of this event will be submitted in the chat box, and our team will read them off during the Q&amp;A section of our meeting. Trolling on any level will not be tolerated. Chat box conversations are to remain respectful. We have a team of people monitoring the chat box, and they are aware of what and whom to look out for. Anyone who takes this event as an opportunity to troll or be disrupted will be removed from the event. And lastly, if you have any follow-up questions regarding this gathering today, please submit your questions to the washingtonpoorpeoplescampaign.org or admin@reachrenton.org.
We thank you all for joining us tonight. We had nearly 300 people to register for this event, which means that this conversation is very important to many people. Our conversation is King County-focused with a special emphasis on South King County, but many of the jewels that you will take with you today can be applied across the state. Next, you will hear the stories of impacted people. You will hear the stories of those who have been greatly impacted by this pandemic and are dealing with housing insecurities. You will also hear from Washington Poor People's Campaign's very own Tay Phoenix, who will talk to us about what it means to rethink our views as landlord-tenant relationships.
So now we first have Iris Walker, followed by Ginny Parham, and then Tay Phoenix. So let's have Iris on, please. Is she here?
There she is.
Okay.
Did that work? Yay!
Yes. Yes, you're on, Iris.
Okay. Do you just want me to go into reading my testimony?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Good evening. My name is Iris Walker. I am 67 years old and a widow. I have lived in Washington for 30 years in the Finney Ridge Greenwood neighborhood. I've been asked to recount how the recent pandemic affected me and how I've been displaced. I am a housekeeper of condos in downtown Seattle. When the pandemic hit in March of last year, housekeepers were not allowed to work. When the ban was lifted, housekeepers still were kept out of buildings by the Board of Directors and not allowed back into mid-September. Living on my social security and dwindling savings and with no end in sight, I gave up my apartment and moved in with my family in Renton. I consider myself to be one of the lucky ones. I have family. Many seniors do not and know where to go. Most have just, are just one incident away from living on the street in illness or loss of work or both. I call us the Gap Group, Baby Boomers. We are not derelicts. We are simply good working people who are now senior citizens who don't make enough money to live where we have lived for decades, raised families, and contributed to the community. How sad is it that we are being gentrified and forgotten? I cannot express the immediate need countywide for more affordable senior housing. I have friends who have been on the list for years. Story after story of seniors waiting. We deserve better. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Iris, for your testimony. Truly appreciate your courage and sharing your experience with us today. I wanted to ask to have Ginny Parham, please, to share your words with us.
Hello, my name is Ginny Parham, and I am a Tacoma Pierce County resident. I want to talk a little bit today about how the COVID pandemic has impacted my rent situation. When the pandemic first hit, I thought that I would be okay financially because I'm on social security disability. I do not work and I had a set rent situation. So I really felt that my living situation would not be impacted by COVID. However, that soon changed when my daughter lost her job due to COVID. After my daughter lost her job, she quickly lost her apartment. I was able to get her into transitional housing through a friend, but that was only for a couple of months, and then she was forced to live in her car. She became homeless with her three children, ages 10 years old, 6 years old, and 2 years old. My daughter also had an eviction on her rental history, which made it almost impossible to find housing. So she made the choice to move to Texas with a friend where she was able to find affordable housing. If my daughter would have been making a $15 livable wage here in Pierce County, then maybe she would have stayed here in Washington. But she says it's just too expensive to live here when you're only making $12 an hour in Pierce County. She was not able to take all her kids with her when she moved to Texas, so she left my 10-year-old grandson Jaquan with me. Jaquan is my daughter's one child that suffers from ADHD. So because of his mental disabilities and challenges, she is the child she chose to leave behind. The ripple effect of my daughter losing her job and home became very real to me when my grandson was up to my care. And for so many reasons, my life seemed to spiral out of control. Not only am I a person advanced in years with a disability, I was living in a one-bedroom apartment, and now I was faced with raising my grandson, who also has a disability. My daughter has decided she will not be coming back to Washington, nor does she want to care for Jaquan anymore. So he will be mine to care for until he's grown. My own children are already grown, so having a 10-year-old child in my home again full-time is extremely stressful and something that I had not planned for. I needed to find a two-bedroom apartment as well as find Jaquan a bed and a dresser. It is extremely difficult to find a two-bedroom apartment with the income of social security disability. I had to come up with move-in costs. I had to take care of old bills at an old address as well as new bills at a new address. I fortunately have friends that helped me, and I was able to find some used items for Jaquan's room. So Jaquan and I are safely in a two-bedroom apartment now, making the best of our new situation. Sadly, however, the cost of moving in, even with the help of my friends, has left me two months behind on my rent. And if not for the state rent moratorium, I would be facing eviction as well. I stepped up to do the right thing concerning my grandson so that he wouldn't have to go to foster care, and now I am having rent problems. I've reached out to Pierce County Rental Assistance for help. However, they have a waiting list that's so long, just in order to hear back from them. I hope that the ripple effect of my daughter losing her job and home straightens out for her soon, as well as Jaquan and I. Until then, all I can do is pray. Thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you so much, Ginny, for your testimony here. And now we're going to have Tay Phoenix to share her words. All right, Tay.
I have a whole set of testimony prepared here, but I just wanted to say something first in response.
It's hard to hear you, dear Tay.
Oh, dear. You can't hear me. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's better.
Awesome. So I just wanted, I'll say this again. I had some testimony prepared, and I am going to share it. But first, I just wanted to say something in response to what Ginny shared. So often, the thing that tumbles people into the catastrophe of homelessness is a disability, be that ADHD, or autism, or a mental health problem, or something else. And I just want to share that as someone with a disability who, you know, I know that I would be homeless and prisoner-dead if it were not for the wealth privilege that I grew up with. And so I'm going to speak about some of that privilege and some of the ways that I'm trying to rethink the role that wealthy people can play. So I remember the first time that I ever heard the term landlord. I was seven, and I overheard one of my teachers saying to another that she had to shower in the gym because her landlord wouldn't fix her water. I didn't know the term landlord until then because my parents made our home, and I didn't realize how much of a privilege that was until much later in life. Let's really sit with that term for a minute. Landlord. It seems like it's kind of from a different time, right? Like, it might belong to feudal Europe, where a nobleman in his castle would live off the labor of serfs that worked his land, right? So the term, it sounds historical, but honestly, like, not much has changed in 500 years. Today's landlords are living off the labor of serfs, right, who scramble around at multiple minimum-wage jobs just to cut them a check every month for housing, which should be a basic right. Most landlords buy real estate because they wanted a return on their investment. They don't factor in the human element, that life is messy and sometimes people can't make ends meet. They expect a monthly dividend in the form of a rental check and plus the appreciation of a property, and they get rather cross when they don't get what they expect. So let me just say, as a blanket statement, if someone is sitting on enough cash that they can make a down payment on a place they don't live in, and they don't want to deal with the human element, including the unpredictability of rental income, they should buy a nice steady mutual fund instead and stay away from other people's lives. And if they wouldn't be able to make a mortgage payment on their investment property for at least a few months without rental income, then they are over-leveraged and creating an unstable housing situation for their fellow human beings because they've bit off more than they could chew. Landlords need to take personal responsibility for the impact of their choices and their financial decisions specifically on their tenants, and I should know because I am one. A few years ago, my husband and I bought a house that was larger than we needed, and our vision was to live with housemates who would rent from us for what they could afford to pay. We've had working-class housemates, grad students, people with tech salaries, and everyone in between. We always make sure that we can float people if they lose a job or have a health emergency because we can't expect that people are going to pay our bills for us come hell or high water. But nobody should have to rely on the disposition of wealthier people to keep a roof over their heads. That's why we need policy that shifts the legal definition and expectations of landlords from being, you know, someone who owns another property that lords their land over others to a housing provider. Housing providers partner with tenants to ensure that nobody gets left behind. Landlords, while somewhat regulated, can still get away with a lot of abusive behavior, especially towards working vulnerable people. Housing providers would be required to maintain ongoing licensure and sufficient cash reserves to keep tenants housed for at least three months without rental income. In return for this additional oversight, federal, state, and local governments should cover mortgage payments in the event of a longer-term financial shortfall, which would stabilize the situation for everyone. Everybody has a right to live. Everybody has a right to clean, safe, affordable housing. The owner class can choose to be a part of the problem by continuing to behave like entitled 16th-century nobility, or we can be part of the solution by rethinking our role in other people's lives and lobbying for policy that would require us and others to do so. Forward together, not one step back.
All right. All right. Thank you, Tay. Thank you, Iris and Ginny, for your powerful testimonies. Now, we will be moving forward with the program. But I wanted to first introduce some of our speakers for today, the panelists here. First is Shukri Olo. Shukri is a mother, a community organizer, a doctorate candidate, and a King County employee, and also a candidate for the King County District 5, which covers Kent, CTAC, Taquilla, Burien, Normandy Park, Des Moines, and Renton. Next off, I want to introduce Sharon Lee. Sharon is the Executive Director of the Low-Income Housing Institute. And the third person is Iris Guzman, and she's a Highline Public School Social Worker, and she's also a candidate for the CTAC City Council.
Next up, we have Dawn Bennett, and she is the co-founder and Executive Director of Multicultural Education Rights Alliance and candidate for Mayor of Kent. And we also have Joseph Todd, who is the Deputy Chief Technology Officer at King County, Washington, and candidate for Renton City Council. Now, we will begin our program, and I just want to tell you, now these questions might get a little spicy now. So let's be prepared. So... As far as when we talk about homelessness, what do you believe are the primary causes of homelessness? We can start with Shukri.
Good evening, everybody. Reverend Bianca Davis Lovelace and Rami Garcia. Appreciate you all for the invitation. It's great to be on here. I love that you went straight to the punch. Let's get to it. My name is Shukri. My pronouns are she, her, hers. I believe that at the core of homelessness is institutional racism, is capitalism, is a system that does not see human beings as a human being, but sees it as a profit, right? An opportunity to make money off the backs of Black people, Brown people, poor people. And I think that institution needs to be reckoned with. And I hope to be able to do that when elected for King County Council District 5.
Thank you. Thank you. Sharon Lee.
Well, I think people are not seeing people as needing housing. And you can just see how it is. It's, people are being swept, right? People are being swept. People are being asked to vanish, right? People who are homeless are asked to vanish from the streets with no place to go. That's because housing is treated as a commodity, as for profit. And the only way to address that is to turn housing into a nonprofit use to make sure that nonprofits, community agencies, and especially publicly-owned land is used for affordable housing. We have a lack of affordable housing. How many people can rent? If you knew you could rent for something for 200 a month, 300 a month, 400 a month, where are you going to find that in King County? Where are you going to even find that in South King County? It's outrageous that we have people on limited incomes or people with no incomes that are struggling, and they end up homeless.
Thank you. Iris.
Hello. Oh, yeah. Hi. So the pronunciation of my name is Edie. So I'm Edie Guzman, and I am a school social worker in the Highline Public Schools. I've been doing social work since about 2006. So the answer to that question, just based on my own personal experience, but then also on my professional experiences, it all started with colonization when property became private versus something that should be out, available for the community and folks should just have access to have their basic needs met. So once it became profitable, I see a lot of my families who are working full-time jobs, who are not making a living wage, as was mentioned earlier, and cannot afford to choose between rent, food, paying the power bill, putting food on the table, clothes on their children's backs. And especially here in King County, there aren't enough support services to create sustainable, affordable housing.
Thank you. Thank you. Dawn. Dawn Bennett.
Hello. Can you hear me? I'm just going to lower my mask so you guys can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to let you guys know that I'm here at my campaign headquarters with my running mate right here. This is Cliff Kaufman. He is running for a city council in, running for District, seat number?
District 4.
District 4. District Four. And so we're running together. So I told him, come on, come on with me, man, because we were already here doing some colonization. So I said, just sit down, sit down with me. So that's Cliff. He might chime in. So I believe I'm gonna uh agree with everyone who spoke to Shukri Sharon Lee. Hi, Edie. Hi, you guys. Hello, all you guys. Hi, Shukri. Hi, Edie. Nice to meet you, Sharon. Hello, Reverend. Uh, it's really great to be here. I'm really happy to to bring Cliff along with me. He just announced today, so yay. This way you guys didn't know about. Um, so I'm bringing him to you. So I would, I believe, I I 100% agree with Sharon that um people are not being seen. People without dollars are are strangely ignored. I use that word strange because I everyone should be seen. And you know, we don't have a lot of money. That's what we're thinking. We're thinking that those in power see us that don't have money. I am a apartment living right now. I was a homeowner. I'm now in an apartment. I've never been in an apartment. My mother kept me in houses, her own house built from the ground. I'm in an apartment right now and the way that people are treated, I am thoroughly disgusted. The cost of rent, I I just bought a house and I can't wait to get in it. But that's me. That's just, I get to do that, right? Because I'm privileged to still make dollars during COVID time. But I do believe that it's about systemic racism and money, money, capitalism, right? Money is driving our housing system and it should not be. And there needs to be leadership in place that can manage that goal so that there's um housing that that people can afford. A lot of my nieces and nephews are on Section Eight. They're being pushed out of wherever they go. They get pushed around all the time. And so systems need folks that are poor, right? They need the small dollars that my nieces and nephews bring, but yet they're not respected for bringing those dollars. They're not respected for being um participating in Section Eight to keep that going, right? When do we end Section Eight and make it that housing is available for every? This is why, this is why I'm running with Cliff, because he's like, here, here. He can't wait to say something. I I let him say something.
You know what? I can just say one thing. I would fully agree with myself, totally agree with uh Shukri um and anyway, for her campaign as well, as well as Edie's um her campaign and CTAC, her and Jake, they do great stuff.
Everybody.
And particularly in cities like Kent, where we're running in order to basically flip the system, those suburbs that now are home to so much, so many folks of the working class going to some of the projects that the housing institute, ones like Sharon Lee and really like Bob Hart and Champion, they were built on exclusion. Literally, the highways, the way that our highways and byways are built are meant to not just divide neighborhoods, but were meant to keep people like us from even moving there and being able to have a life there. So one cannot say that um our very built environment is somehow divorced from institutional racism, classism, and uh the sameills that we fight today. Yeah. So I'm definitely very proud to be running uh before. All the things y'all are saying in chat is exactly why we need to um take over.
We need to change the leadership.
Damn right.
Perfect. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So Joseph Todd, Joseph Todd, same question.
So chiefly, I think um the biggest problem um that's causing homelessness in this area is empathy and compassion. The legislators in this area, in this region, do not have empathy and compassion for those folks who are dealing with um um home insecurity. When we sit down and we think about writing policy, it doesn't have empathy and compassion built in it. When we sit down and we think about the housing stock that we're building, are we building housing stock that has different income levels so that you can put folks together and grow communities? We're not really thinking about people. And people is the biggest thing i- is what's causing this in this in this region. And so when I think about this problem, it's mostly empathy and compassion. And then second, it's around the success of the region having, right? Because the region is doing quite well because we have technology companies that are doing quite well in providing jobs, but that drives up the housing prices, right? And so that's why we have to have people in office making decisions around ordinances and in particular, working with the region to solve homelessness issues instead of going off on your own and going over with your own policies. This is a regional problem and we need to get together and really figure out how we can solve this problem together. And so for me, it's the compassion, making sure that we have the right kind of folks in office that are running, that are thinking about these things as a people problem. That's what needs to happen in this region. That's why we have a homeless problem.
Amen. Amen. All right, Rami. Oh, let me put one caveat. Um, a lot of these questions are one-minute questions, so I will pull your coat tail like they do in the black church. All right?
All right. So uh just quickly, Violet around? Violet Levantao? Bianca?
Yes. No, Violet.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. So just to ask the follow-up, and some of you actually touched on some of this related question. It has to do like, given that context, what you have describing all, what do you believe are some of the strategies that would work when it comes to preventing homelessness? So who who would like to go first?
Happy to start us off. Um, I forgot to also acknowledge um Jenny and Tay. Um, and uh what was the third person? Iris. Iris Walker for their stories. We honor your truth and um we see you and we hope to be able to impact uh, you know, the situations that you're all currently facing. Um, in terms of your question, I think, you know, I'd love Joseph's response to that, the lack of empathy and compassion. But I would also add that it's um a lack of lived experience, right? Like when you have elected officials or people who are running for office, who've never been homeless, who've never experienced poverty, who've never grew up in public housing, who don't understand what it looks like to navigate the food bank and um have that EBT card, like many of us grew up in this community experience, um they don't really know um how to think about these issues beyond an intellectual capacity level, right? Um, I think we need legislators and elected officials who bring that lived experience and uh an ability to navigate these systems to be able to see at the core of these issues are not just ideas and strategies, but human beings, human beings who deserve access to housing, access to healthcare, access to a quality education. And so I think, and I believe this at my core, that one of the key challenges that we have is that people who don't have that lived experience, often in spaces of decision-making, coming up with policies that don't necessarily impact them or those they love. And so we need to change that, and that's why I'm running.
Thank, thank you.
Well, I wanted to um answer, help answer that question.
Yes.
I feel um, I feel obviously, if we had more affordable housing, right, we wouldn't have this high rate of homelessness. Basically, outside of Seattle, the southwest, southwest King County has the largest homeless population. And King County also has the largest population living in cars and vehicles. We have over 2,700 people living in their vehicles and nobody is doing anything about safe parking. Um, like, do you see King County or any of the suburban cities like really doing um anything important around um safe parking? There are a couple of churches and that's about it. It is pitiful. We also have a thousand, can you imagine, a thousand homeless young adults? Look at the way we treat our young people, 18 to 25, when, you know, when, and they're young, they're in their formative years and are homeless, um people aging out of foster care. What I want to say is that we have some housing in um Auburn, Kent, we developed some housing in Auburn, Kent, Renton. It was really, really hard to do this. And if we had people on city council in some of these suburban cities that would be more supportive, it would make a huge, huge difference. As an example, we currently um house the Lehigh Low Income Housing Institute. We house 3,000 um men, women and children. And then we have 700 tiny houses, um tiny houses because they're housing homeless, you know, homeless people who are otherwise on the street. If we did not have 4,000 units of affordable places, we would have 4,000 more people on the streets of King County. So we know the solution. The solution is not that difficult. Housing linked with services, affordable housing linked with services is the cure.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Sharon. All right, who, do we have uh Edie Guzman?
Yes. Um, so a lot of what's being said is something that I also grew up like in uh low-income housing, uh Section Eight housing as a child. And so I think what Shukri said really resonates that unless you've experienced it, it's easy to remove yourself from it and not to understand why this is a basic need that should be just met. Uh, so I feel that the type of solution that I would want is definitely affordable housing, but sustainable affordable housing. I know that in Seattle, they built up a lot of units, but I don't know if people have been in them. They're not necessarily quality um compared to, say, their neighbors across the street, uh the houses that people were purchasing at the time in order to create mixed income housing developments. And so that's something that I've also put a lot of thought into. For me, I want to see affordable housing, but I also want to see the neighborhoods where you do have mixed income. Because oftentimes when you have affordable housing and other folks don't want to live around there, particularly people who have higher incomes, um, people who are trying to get away from that situation. And then you see where it impacts the neighborhood, where it impacts that sense of community, where it impacts a sense of like um belonging. And so for me, I want to create not just affordable housing, but I want to create a sense of community where people can see themselves in each other, regardless of what our incomes are, regardless of our walks in life. Um, and I know that's more getting idealistic, but I live in a community in CTAC where we're a little bit of all of that, where you have professionals and you have working-class folks. And so trying to create that for people and make it sustainable.
All right. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Now, uh, what about Dawn Bennett, please?
So I'm going to say the biggest challenge that we have, and I believe Cliff and I agree on this, is emerging suburban cities. Uh, like I said earlier, I um, I just purchased a home and the amount of folks that are moving out of this suburb is, has driven the price of homes high-high. Um, again, I I have to keep stressing that I am one of the privileged few that kept the job. Not only did I keep a job, I continue, I could continue to run organizations because of, because people are struggling, because of racism, I'm able to run organizations and continually get funding. To me, that's a privilege. And because of that, I could purchase a house in an area that had our housing price, our house, home prices went up within a matter of a year or two, sky-high. Um, and I know the reason why, right? There are folks with means that don't like where they are, so they they get to come out to the suburbs and so they push those prices up. My thought is, what's happening to those folks who who are in low-income housing that we have uh gotten in Kent? What has happened to those folks? How are they getting treated? I want to know. I want to talk to the community and I want to know. And I need, I need folks to explain to me um what our city leadership has um has done for those folks, because I'm sure that they're very happy with the housing market being a boom in Kent. But then you have to, you have to think about the whole. You have to think about those who do not have, and you have to think about those who have and how we're going to mix that together in Kent. That's why.
Thank you, Dawn. All right, now we have uh Joe.
Okay. You got it. Never mind. You got it?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Um, so I think there's three solutions that if we really look at the housing problem in the area, there's one, to actually increase housing where you have different incomes, right? So when we, when we put people together who have different types of incomes in one place, they perf, they, and and when they engage each other, when they live together, they see each other differently, right? And it grows communities because you have different aspects of people living and surviving, right? Because what, what, if we're not careful, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna put this low, this low-income housing in place, we're gonna put them over there out of the way, where nobody's gonna see them, nobody wants to deal with them, and then we're gonna have the other side of the tracks and create the same problem that we had with public housing that we've had in the past. So mixed income is where we need to go. The other piece is, we need to have transitional housing. We don't have enough of it. So when we do help people get off the street, would they stay in transitional housing for a month or two and they're back on the street because we don't have enough places to put them in? We can't build housing fast enough, so we have to increase our transitional housing stock. And then third, I think, we really need to look at uh countries like Ireland that have put rent, rent pressure zones in place that say, hey, if you're in a particular area that um that has high rents, you can't increase your rent above 4%. We need to have those types of zones here in Washington State so that when people do get into these, into housing and on fixed incomes, all of a sudden, their rent is being raised to the point where they can't even use it, where they can't even live there. So those, those are three things I really think will be effective. And being on Renton City Council, if uh I want to be elected there, I know I do a fantastic job and I really think th- th- these types of options really help people grow and thrive.
All right, tha- thank you, Joseph.
So this question in particular will go to Sharon. So Sharon, we're putting you on the spot. So what issues do you believe are impacting the building of more affordable housing in South King County?
Well, frankly, because of all the um displacement happening in Seattle, you're seeing tremendous, tremendously high rents in South King County now. So you're getting the same displacement and gentrification happening in, you know, South County. And that's why you have to have measures in place to stop the displacement of lower-income people and communities of color. Um, it is um, there are ways to address that. And one way is to make sure that the governor, as well as King County, support a huge investment in affordable housing through the Housing Trust Fund. There's a state um program called the Housing Trust Fund and also um through um levies and other measures. And with the Biden administration, hopefully there's going to be a huge infusion of housing as infrastructure, not just, you know, roads and bridges, but housing as a core need that that um we can, we can create jobs and we can house people who are truly needy. So one thing um we're finding out is that many suburban cities, they have um significant barriers to actually developing affordable housing. So that's an important thing for elected officials to look at. How do we eliminate the barriers that make it so difficult and so expensive to build the housing? Um, in the meantime, um, we really need short-term, it's almost like it takes so long to build housing, you need short-term solutions. And that's why, if we could buy some hotels and convert them, if we can um buy buildings that um are no longer viable for the private market, if we can do tiny house villages, um, we're starting a tiny house village in Skyway. Um, we hope to do one in Taquilla. And we have um eight tiny house villages in Seattle. And that also um helps get people, like people have to be somewhere while they apply for housing. So a case manager will work with people while they're living in a tiny house and then move them into permanent housing. As everybody knows, you have to get on a waiting list, right? So you might as well wait somewhere. You might as well, instead of waiting in your car or waiting under a bridge, you wait in a heated you know, safe tiny house in a community. So we're asking, um, let's not let anybody else die from exposure or violence or um suicide because they're so depressed, they um die living on the streets.
Thank you, Sharon. And that, we want to make sure that you were the person to answer that because we know that you have the expertise in that area. So thank you for answering that for us. Um, we're gonna go on to the next question. So just in the interest of time, so we'll go on to the next question, Rami.
All right. So what do you see are the key uh policy failures that are impacting? All right. So what do you see are the key, uh, policy failures that are impacting King County residents? And what are some policy solutions that we need in order to address homelessness here in King County? All right. All right, thank you, Joseph.
I think one of the policy failures that we've had within the King County region is the one percent tax for King County actually being able to collect the taxes to actually build more affordable housing and build more transitional housing. And allow the loophole for these cities around the region to opt out of it. And then go off on their own and take these sales taxes and, and, and somehow take a regional problem and try to solve it by themselves. That's not gonna work. We need to be working as a region to solve this problem because one city by itself can't do it. Seattle has a budget of five billion dollars. Rinton has a budget of five hundred million dollars. If Seattle can't solve their homeless problem by themselves, what makes Rinton think they can solve their homeless problem by themselves? So one of the things that we need to get rid of is these loopholes that allow cities to opt out of these regional policies to try to fix this issue. Because if you can opt out, you're gonna continue to have this problem.
Got it. All right, thank you for that.
Um, I want to echo, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna jump in. I want to echo that, that we need to, uh, make taxing more equitable when we have the world, world richest man living in our county and pays zero taxes and I pay more taxes than him as a social worker, that's a problem. Um, but we also have, um, the failure of zoning where people find out, like, um, someone, they're gonna build a homeless encampment or they're gonna house, you know, people experiencing homelessness in hotels, or they're gonna build affordable housing, and then it becomes the not in my backyard mentality. And those folks lobby to not have this housing built in their location. They use inaccurate information, um, a lot of scare tactics against people who are experiencing homelessness. And it just becomes the dehumanizing, and then it also becomes the like, I want to keep my property values up versus like, how can we work together to make this a inviting community where we can all live safely, live happily, and really just take care of one another?
I love that, Edes. I was just gonna add, I think a lot about, um, some of the intersections of these systems of housing and policing and housing and behavioral health and housing and education. And I wonder about not piecemealing and coming up with, you know, technical fixes to more adaptive challenges. And I wonder about an upstream approach to some of the conversations that we're having right now. And so if we're talking about housing, um, how can we have better supports around, um, programming or investments that can help prevent people from becoming homeless? Um, if we're talking about housing, how do we ensure that we have a robust behavioral health system uh, and a mental health system that is able to support people when they're in a time of need? If we're talking about housing, how do we ensure that we come up with, um, efforts around the school to prison pipeline so that our children are not going from our education system to our prison system to our homelessness system, right? And so I don't want to be thinking about these issues as like siloed challenges, um, because they often intersect. And when they do intersect, we know that folks in South King County, especially because of gentrification, have been disproportionately impacted by those intersections. And I hope we, we bring that type of lens, right? That systems level lens to intersecting issues.
All right, thank you. All right, Don.
Can I break in here real fast? Because, because I, I really wanted to comment after Joseph, uh, because I do think that, this is why I'm running for mayor of Kent. I do think that Kent likes to be the outlier out there doing their own thing and not, for, for folks not to see what we're doing out in Kent. I got a whiff of that and I, I didn't like it at all. I think we need to put together a seamless system of handing off those who are in need from city to city in, in, in the King County area. We have to work together. We have to make sure that all of our systems are working together to help folks. And then I'm handing it over to Cliff here. We know we have.
We, we don't have time. I'm sorry, we don't have time. We, we trying to get through. Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right.
Who, who else? Anybody left?
The chair.
It's us.
Sharon, did you want to address that?
Well, I mean, I think, um, sometimes policy, um, sounds like, oh, policy, um, isn't this like, you know, really important to talk about policy? But policy in lots of ways equals funding, right? You can't just have policy, you have to have funding. So how come, you know, regional, regionally, we have this like gigantic sound transit measure, and then we had this like gigantic harbor view measure, right? I mean, we have these like huge public works, um, investments. And housing is not seen at that level. Housing needs to be, housing is capital. It's capital and operating, right? But, you know, bricks and mortar. And you gotta, you gotta like, it has to be meaningful. You can't say, oh, you know, um, we gotta study it to death. That's what we have all the time. Let's make a plan. Let's make a plan, right? And then you end up with like a hundred units or two hundred units. When we have a shortage, we have a shortage of like, you know, like two hundred, you know, like we have a shortage of fifty thousand. Let's just say we have a shortage of fifty thousand low income affordable units, right? So we need to make it meaningful. It has to be impactful.
Thank you. Hey. All right. So I have a two, I'm gonna combine a question, actually, and this is one of the more spicier questions. In light of recent community concerns around racial inequalities, um, in some of our South King County cities, how do you think office holders and other public servants should approach incidents of racial discrimination and, and, yeah, and inequalities within city limits, uh, city government, rather? Also, um, the second part to that question, um, what are some of the ways that marginalized communities can build power? So do, do you need me to repeat that question? In light of recent community concerns around racial inequalities in some of our South King County cities, how do you think office holders and other public servants should approach incidents of racial discrimination, inequalities within city, city government? And also, what are some of the ways that marginalized communities can build power?
I'm gonna jump in, I'm gonna take.
Go ahead, yep.
So Cliff, the heat, we're both biting at the bit. I'm like, back off, Cliff. So I, I, I think that, um, that question is exactly for a city like Kent. When, I, I don't like the term majority minority, but I, I'd have to use it to get the gist of what I'm talking about, right? City leadership needs to understand, you know, what that means. That means talking to all cultures, understanding culturally what, which culture is going through what. Leadership does not even know. My company, uh, Multicultural Education Rights Alliance, I put it together on purpose. I bring a panel of different cultures to young emerging master level students at the University of Washington and, and other universities to hear stories about what different cultures go through in their, in, in their cities, in their communities. And if I'm doing that, my goal is to make that bigger. Then I find out that I live in the city with the most cultures in Washington State. Something's going to be done. And the first thing that has to be done, not a lot of fighting, a lot of listening. And we did that, we did that yesterday at Easter, in the, at the Easter holiday celebration where we gave away free gifts. We talked to folks in different languages. We had translation there. It was beautiful. And them just making sure that we listen to them, the smile, all the smiles, this was, uh, it was.
And civil rights enforcement.
And civil rights. Thank you.
Shukri?
Thank you, Reverend Bianca. I agree with Don that I think elected officials and those in positions of power need to be able to listen to their constituents. And if they don't, we need to be able to vote them out. Um, to your question about what are some ways that communities can build power, um, I don't believe that our work or our, um, you know, liberation is tied to an elected official or is tied to someone who's in a position of power. I think we are our saviors. And so we need to build across coalitions, we need to build across solidarity efforts, we need to build across racial lines to be able to get to collective liberation. And I know that there are many people who are organizing to be able to do that, both in the streets, uh, like you and in spaces like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, this is Joseph. I, I, I think marginalized communities can, can grow, um, their engagement by coming and speaking at a council meeting and letting their voices be heard. Um, getting more understanding of what's going on in their city and the issues that are, are, are going on in their city. And how you can engage on those and how you can add a marginalized community lens to the decisions being made around how you fix problems. I think that's how we, a, a, as we get involved with things like that, I think that's how we grow our engagement. And that's how we grow, uh, being a part of a community. I think as a, as a community leader, if you're sitting on a city council somewhere and something racist happens in your city and you don't call it out for what it is by name and who it was, then you need to step down. You should, you should never be able to come to one of these suburban cities and say anything against any of your community members or anything happening to your community members without those council members calling it out. I, I am tired of training on conscious bias, unconscious bias, um, equity and social justice. I don't want to take any more classes until somebody does exactly what those classes say. When you see something, say something. If you, if, if you can't do that, then don't run for office. Go sit quietly on your couch and yell at the TV and be done with it. But that, that's my response. We, when you see something, say something as a leader.
You better preach. Okay. Amen. Uh, Sharon, I saw Sharon next.
Yes, thank you. Well, in terms of marginalized communities, I think it's very important to control the land. It's very important that the historic African American churches, the historic Asian churches do not go sell their land. Use the land, use the parking lot, build affordable housing.
Right, right.
Payers have paid for public land. Ask for that land. That land should not be sold. Public land should not be sold to for-profit developers. Public land should be sold and to nonprofit community groups or kept in public trust. And we need to have mixed income housing, affordable housing on that land and community facilities. Um, you, you know, we've been working a lot with, um, some of the churches in the central area. And believe me, um, we actually need to take a position around reparation. If you look at what happened with urban renewal and model cities and the war on poverty, it's outrageous how much land was lost by the churches and by African American and Asian families because of slum clearance. Like, if you actually look at some of the parks, some of the parks in the central area were actually, um, stolen from African American families to create parks, right? And now we're looking for land to make sure that historic residents of the central area can stay in the neighborhood. And while the land is gone, right? So I think it's important for public officials to look at the historic, historic racist policies that have happened and to look at reparation.
Ooh, you guys are preaching. Woo. This is good. This is good conversation. All right, who's next? Um.
I think I am. Yeah. Yes. So what I want to say in regards to elected officials is call it out. I think that, um, the idea that racism happens elsewhere or I'm not a part of it is, uh, it's a non-starter. Like, we live in a white supremacist society. We live in a system that upholds white supremacy values. And if you are afraid to call it out, like Joseph said, then, you know, sit at your couch, sit on your couch and stay home. Because, um, someone like me who's a light-skinned Latina, I call that stuff out all the time because I have the safety net to do so. Um, but it is also my duty to do so. And so when I see or hear things, particularly in my job at the schools, I'm not afraid to speak truth to it. It might make people uncomfortable. It might upset people, but I do not care. And the reason why I don't care is because too many lives are being lost. Too many, um, young people, especially our black and brown youth, are being pushed out of the systems. And as was mentioned earlier, the school to prison pipeline. And so that's something that we need to be always paying attention to and always calling it what it is. And elected officials also have the opportunity to write it into contracts, to make it a point to bring in developers of color, to bring in businesses of color, to bring in opportunities for their current residents who, um, in most of our cities are mostly BIPOC folk. And so let's just acknowledge that, you know, the bygone days of whatever our era used to be is not something we're trying to relive. We're trying to live in the here and now. And as organizing for community, I think it's just kind of what everybody said, let's come together. Because we do have already within our cultures, a very strong sense of community. We know how to take care of ourselves. We know how to like get through things, right? We're all here because our ancestors survived some pretty atrocious things to make sure that we got here to this moment in time. And so we can come together cross culturally and make sure that as these incidents, incidences are happening, that we're all calling it out. Because it shouldn't just fall on what the community that's being impacted by it. Because at the end of the day, it impacts each one of us.
Thank you. Thank you. Wonderful answers. Wonderful, wonderful. Um, so we're going to transition over into the audience questions. How many do we have? Christina and Jill?
I got three questions on my end here.
Christina?
Two, so we have five total.
Okay, perfect. Let's, let's go into the Q and A.
So Kevin Allen asked, um, with all the federal funding that we're getting, what, what would be some of the practical achievable solutions to the homelessness and housing, uh, issues that we're facing?
Uh, this is Joseph. Um, I, I think one of the solutions definitely would be us looking at city budgets and not funding programs that aren't putting the community first. Like in my city of Rinton, we're funding two million dollars for take home cars for police. You know what you could do with two million dollars to help communities?
Wow.
So, so we need to stop doing silly things with the money that our taxpayers are providing us and making solutions that put people first. Cars are not people first. Making sure that you're, um, looking at how are you gonna keep your small businesses are in place? And then allowing other people to start businesses can grow communities and have more people want to come and invest in your community, which could build housing stock. Invest in things like that.
So nobody wants to see people living in a cardboard box or living under a bridge or living in a tent in a park where, you know, you want your children to play in the park and there's homeless people in the park. So homelessness is not just affecting the homeless person. It's affecting business. It's affecting the neighbors. It's affecting all of us, right? And so we have to, we have to make sure that people are cared for. And one way to do it is to purchase some of those unused empty hotels. The other way is to build some tiny houses. You know, we can't have people in congregate shelters anymore. We can't have people in these like giant dormitories because of COVID. It's just not healthy. I mean, it's not healthy. Even before COVID, it wasn't healthy, right? Because you could get, you know, TB, you could, um, spread, um, bed bugs. I mean, like, you know, you could spread germs by putting everybody in some big, you know, warehouse dormitory. So that's why, uh, we worked with tiny houses. Because if you're in a tiny house by yourself, you can lock that door and you're sleeping, you're not sleeping next to somebody. And then when you open the door, you have fresh air. So it turned out that tiny houses were very good during COVID. And as long as there's some property, it costs us about, um, two thousand five hundred for materials to build a tiny house. And we have people, volunteers, building these. And then you have a safe community. You know, it's like the old family camp. The family stays in the tiny house and then, you know, you have a common kitchen and you have bathrooms and showers, right? And at least you have a decent place that you can call, you know, your tiny house until we move you into housing. So there are solutions. And the tiny house movement has, um, picked up across the country as well. You will see that lots of other communities are starting this effort rather than letting people stay on the street in tents.
Love to just add to that, Sharon. I think because of COVID, government has been able to shift differently. Um, and there's some emerging best practices, like you mentioned, the, uh, buying up of properties like motels to be able to be able to house those who are unsheltered. And I think there are additional things that government has been able to do to better support our, um, unsheltered community members as well, like tenant protections, for example, in the city of Burian, which is in the district that I'm running in. Um, like rental assistance at the county level, uh, for example. And so there's opportunities to be able to continue, um, some of the programs that are in effect right now after COVID, whenever that happens. Um, because people were struggling before COVID, right? And I, I'd imagine that if the moratorium, whenever it lifts, that it's actually going to be, um, a very difficult time for a lot of people. Um, and then finally, I think at some point, we need to be thinking about rent control at the state level. Like, what does that look like? Um, because at the height of what's going on right now, um, we're just going to be able to have people that are basically able to cover a portion of their rent. They're going to consistently need rental assistance because they cannot keep up with their rent. And I think that's at the state level policy that we need to be looking at.
I think that, uh, I, there, in the strategic plan for the city, I think there, there needs to be a better budgetary strategy because of what Shukri just said. When we come out of, um, COVID and rental, um, the moratorium on rent, it's going to be really hard for people. And so there has to be a budget that can, that could be responsible to, to that. I think city budgets can be spent more responsibly and, and it has to happen. The taxpayers think, think that our city budgets are being spent responsibly. Right? And another thing that I have to say is I have to give it is, um, her props. Because she did say, when you see something, say something. She saw me getting discriminated against. And she says something. She used her life privilege and said it was wrong. So I gotta, you know, I gotta vouch for, for her. She really means what she said.
Um, yeah, Dawn and I used to work together and I'm not going to get into the story, but I actually recently came across the emails because I had sent them to myself, just in case things went kind of south. So I kept records of them. Um, yeah, and I did speak up because I saw some stuff that was not okay. And I remember we took it as far as we could. Made me cheer up a little bit. Thank you for that, Dawn. Um, I know for a fact C-TAC got some CARES money. And I know for a fact that they did not utilize it as they stated. And so for me, that is problematic because as I am going to do home visits in C-TAC where I work and live, there are a lot of families who are asking for rental assistance. And if I, as a social worker, cannot connect them to that, then it just makes me wonder where the disconnect is. And I've reached out to the, um, some of the current city council members asking like, where is this money? And it's sitting there. And they're like, oh, we're trying to find ways to spend it. And when I've said, well, this is what our families need in order to stay here, well, I haven't heard that or I'm not aware of that, right? And so to me, it's like, well, there's a disconnect, right? That our, um, city leaders are not talking to people in need. They're not making those connections. And then they're not utilizing the money because in C-TAC specifically, we don't even have like a nonprofit that's receiving rental assistance funds that can give out to families. They have to go to Kent. They have to go, um, to Seattle. They have to go to different cities to access this. And when I try to do that, oh, we don't have any more money for the C-TAC residents. So again, there's that runaround, that, um, that, um, difficulty in receiving support services. As was mentioned, um, earlier, one of the speakers, um, who tried to get rental assistance in Pierce County and isn't receiving the support that she needs. Um, you know, it comes down to like, that's the immediate solution, right? Like, if you've got money, uh, make sure that people who need it know how to access it. It's got to be streamlined. It can't be like, well, call this number, talk to this person, email this person. Uh, you know, go to this agency, fill out this paperwork. It's, it, I mean, come on now, like, and I'm the one who's trying to do all this as a social worker. You know, and I'm like, and my families oftentimes don't even speak English as a primary language. So a lot of it is streamlining the resources, but then also on the larger level, as been mentioned, like, we really need our state legislator making sure that this is pocketed. I'm sorry, that set aside just automatically because it doesn't matter whether it's COVID or whatever the, whatever the next issue is, these are going to be needs that are ongoing. And that's part of where the affordable housing also needs to be sustainable because I have seen where affordable housing, you know, has, um, time-limited contracts. So it could be 30 years, but then what happens at that 30-year point? Folks are like, the landlords, right? The owners of the buildings are like, okay, we're out. We're not going to make it affordable housing anymore because we can get more money now. So then we got to just find that balance. And we, we as a community have to push back to our representatives, to our city council members, to folks who have the money in their hands and aren't willing to disperse it as needed.
Who has the next question? Is it Christina?
Yeah, I've got a question from Laura. It's been worse and frustrating watching the South End City pass the housing crisis around without doing anything. Getting the right council member is one thing, but most of the city managers, if not all, are white, as are any of the policy staff that they have. This is a roadblock I've been bumping up against as a policy analyst. Are any of you looking at how the staffing affects policy and outcomes? Good question.
Very good question.
I feel like I've taken up a lot of space, but I'm also learning to take up space as a black woman.
Amen.
Amen. All right. Um, I think, you know, the staffing is a reflection of the leadership. And so often, um, staff are able to hire who they believe, uh, needs to be in that role. Um, and often we need to be looking at who we're electing into these positions. And so I would say that we need a more, um, you know, candidates who are a reflection of their communities, where then able to bring a diverse staff in those positions as well.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to hang back as well because I can talk a lot. Um, I do think that the, um, the workers, uh, city government workers should reflect the community. I think Kent has a lot of work to do around this. Um, as I'm out there on the campaign trail, it comes up constantly. It's not like the people don't see what's happening to them. So I love the question. I agree with the question that you need to just get a little brown in there. And it's, it's a little bit anemic and that's wrong. That can't be. And when I am mayor, I'm going to change that.
I mean, Reverend Bianca, I think you, you, you've been part of, um, the Rent Residence for Change, the group that I founded with a friend of mine for the Renton area. And you're a part of helping us develop a policy for, um, the city having 50/50 employment when it comes to people of color and majority. And then also having 50% uh, contracts when it comes to actually the city doling out money to organizations to help build infrastructure in the city. So I think as a council member and as citizens, we need to demand that our government looks like us. Otherwise, they're not going to be taking your lens into account when it comes time to make decisions, period.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. That's right.
Sidebar, let us know how, uh, Washington State Poor People's Campaign could support you in that. And I'll meet myself.
Um, something I did want to say about that, and I saw somebody's, um, comment. I think for me, it, a lot of it is definitely him making sure that, um, we are reflecting our community. And so when I first got hired at my job, for example, at the current job I have now, I was the only Spanish-speaking, um, and bicultural person despite the fact that our school district's 40% Latinx, right? So that was a problem. So I immediately addressed that and like, we gotta hire more people. And I pushed and pushed and pushed and I, I did whatever I could to get people to apply to, you know, kind of, um, get the opportunity to come in. So with that said, I think that's also true what we can do if city council, um, members and with our city council, like I had mentioned earlier, writing it into the contracts, putting it into the language, um, prioritizing our BIPOC community, but then also prioritizing people of low income. Because, um, I think what this country does really well is it divides people, um, by racial, um, uh, by race, because that's how it was built, right? Like, that was intentional. And so how do we come together with our people who are experiencing, uh, just different varieties of hardships, financial hardships, to ensure that as these things are progressing, that we're bringing everybody together? My biggest belief is when you bring up the person the most vulnerable and need, you're bringing us all up.
It sounds, and, uh, I'm just going to add a little sidebar to this. It sounds like there's a basic theme across, um, the cities and that there needs to be more advocacy work to make sure that those who work in city government reflects the, the, um, population which they're serving. So that sounds like an, uh, an area of advocacy, uh, hit, hit Poor People's Campaign.
It's only right. It's only right. I mean, it makes so much sense, but who says our city government right now is making sense? That's why I'm running. Our people think city government is making sense. And then when they found that, find out that their city government is not making sense, they want to know who's going to get in there and make some sense, right? It's our, if our, if our city contracts i- in the city of Kent, if 97% of the contracts go to white males, our city, which is majority-minority, they're going to want to know is who's going to do something about that. And if somebody's not going to do something about that, those who are in place, who are going to tell them? Who's going to tell them that it has to be different? Who's going to tell them about I-200 unless you got, you got, you, you grab Cliff here, right? And you talk about I-200 and how, it's just, it's just the basic. I mean, like, stuff that is happening to, happening to us, folks have to, um, step out and, and take leadership roles. And that's what I'm about to do. And I'm going to tell you now, because I stepped out, uh, as a black woman running in Kent, right? Things have already started happening. Like, they're presenting all this stuff. They have a DEI position. And I'm like, does that DEI position have a team? Because it can't just be one person. You can't do this hard work with just one person. You have to then put some resources behind what you just told the, uh, the community. You just told the community about this one DEI person. And my question is, where's the team? This race stuff is really hard. And if you put one person out there, that one person is going to be devoured. Now, is that by design? Or is, are we going to put some resources on that? If I'm mayor, when I am mayor, we're going to look at that budget and we're going to say, we're going to do this correctly because we're too multicultural in Kent to, to do it in this way. You're here. I mean, my.
I'm loving the fist bump. I'm loving the fist bump. All right.
It's on fire.
Okay, do, uh, Jill? Let, let's do one more. Let's do one more question and then we'll wrap up.
The Sue, Sue Radner asked, how do we tackle with the issue that the Section 8 waylists are closed in many places without alternative options for a lot of folks looking to transition into permanent housing?
I grew up in, Shukri here, I grew up in the city of Kent on a Section 8 voucher with a mother who was working two to three jobs in housekeeping. I know what that voucher does for families in our community. And Section 8 is a federal voucher that's connected to HUD, Housing and Urban Development, right? And so we need to be looking at a model like that at the county level so that more of our community members can have, uh, sustainable, uh, subsidized housing in our neighborhoods, in our, in our community, especially in South King County. And so that's how I would respond. Happy to hear the thoughts of others as well.
Well, Section 8 is a, um, widely effective program. And it's something that basically is limited, even though, um, so many people are eligible. And we need to make sure that the federal budget provides Section 8 for people, all people who are eligible. Um, otherwise, um, it's almost like, um, you know, it's true, you have to enter a lottery. Can you believe it? So many people, you have to enter a lottery and wait for your name to be, to get called and be the lucky one to win affordable housing, which is pretty outrageous. Um, we have, um, two senators, um, Murray and Cantwell, who have been tremendous on this. And then we have, um, our congressional delegation. And they've got to prioritize additional vouchers, uh, uh, additional Section 8 vouchers for this community. Um, you know, when they, um, the Republicans supported, um, Section 8 for, um, veterans. Um, and so all of a sudden, um, they ended up, um, almost ending like veterans homelessness in certain communities because there were enough vouchers, but you had to be a veteran, right? Well, so we know it could be very effective. If we had enough, we can end people's homelessness.
You know, based on, uh, on what Sharon is saying, I also think that the branding for Section 8 needs to have a, a, a huge face change, right? Um, when, when people hear Section 8 and you hear about a Section 8, um, housing or anything being built in the community, it's got such this bad brand around we're bringing criminals or something into your neighborhood. It's ridiculous. Um, people need to understand that Section 8 helps people in all walks of life. And when they understand that, more communities are more susceptible to having those types of communities built into their neighborhoods. So I think one of the biggest things is that we need to take this, that sheen off of Section 8 to say that it's this bad miserable thing that's coming to my community.
I think Section 8, much like, um, the minimum wage is kind of, it hasn't kept up with the times. And so I think that's something that we also need to focus on a larger scale. Um, and kind of what was said, that we also need to bring it on a more local scale as well. Because if we only get so many Section 8 vouchers available, you know, per cycle, and it's every few years too. It's not every year or every few months, right? It's every like two or three years. Um, it's not responding to the needs, the current needs of our community. And so just the way the minimum wage hasn't kept up with inflation and just with everything that's happened, I feel that that is something similar that's happening with the Section 8 vouchers and Section 8 housing. Uh, we're looking at numbers from like 10 years ago versus two or three years ago. And so making sure that all the correct information and data is there. And then also, I think, um, something else I heard is helping people transition into different types of housing.
Awesome, awesome. I think we got everyone. Wow. This conversation, I am fired up. So fired up. Uh, I cannot wait till we debrief Washington State Poor People's Campaign. I cannot wait. Um, this has been a wonderful, wonderful, uh, discussion. This is not the last discussion. The, the Washington State Poor People's Campaign and Reach will be collaborating on future town halls. Uh, the conversation around homelessness and poverty needs to continue. Because we are at a point right now where this, where this moratorium is about to be lifted. And when I tell you that I am scared of the, of the impact that that lifting of the, the rent moratorium is going to make, not just here in King County, but nationally. I am just nervous of, uh, the many people and the many groups who will be impacted by that. And, um, you know, as someone who works frequently, you know, every day with the, um, those who are, um, uh, deal with housing insecurity, I can't even imagine, you know, um, the kind of, of impact that it'll have on not just the population, but also organizations. Because organizations, you know, at the end of the day, you, you're working so much on a tiny, tiny budget to, in order to, to, um, to, to help, to help people. And so at the end of the day, we need to figure out ways in which we all can collaborate. That's the reason, uh, the Poor People's Campaign is made up of nothing more than a bunch of organizations, a bunch of faith, uh, uh, faith-based communities who are coming together to have these conversations around poverty, to have these conversations around, um, homelessness. So at the end of the day, we need to continue this, 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 uh, this discussion. We need to continue to build this movement. If you, you better check Reverend Barbara out. Reverend Barbara don't play. So, so this movement is an ongoing movement. I am so happy and so proud that Reach has decided to join the, of the Poor People's Campaign and to really get involved in advocacy work because, you know, we, we, we just really made that, that, that commitment this year. And I'm just very proud of the direction that Reach is going in. So at the end of the day, we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot, uh, to do as the Washington State Poor People's Campaign. We got a lot of, we got a lot of things to discuss in the future. Thank you to our panelists. Um, you all were, wow. I, I'm, I'm literally over here like, there's so much I want to do, you know? This is, you guys have inspired me. So I'm, I'm fired up. And, and yeah. When we get fired up, we, we make noise. So. That, you guys know what I mean? So you guys know what I mean by that PPC. And so I want to thank the Coordinating Committee. Who's, Coordinating Committee, raise your hands, wave. Washington State Poor People's Campaign. Reach, Reach, everyone from Reach. Maggie, Patty, James, I think I've seen James, Raul. You all wave. And so we will continue this conversation. I thank you all. And before we leave, Romy, you want to lead us in the way we close out?
Oh, sure. All right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, let's do a quick song.
Okay.
Oh, quick, oh, okay.
Somebody's hurting poor people. And it's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. Somebody's hurting poor people. And it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. Somebody's sleeping unsheltered. And it's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. Somebody's sleeping unsheltered. And it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. Somebody's facing eviction. And it's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. Somebody's facing eviction. And it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. Somebody's hurting poor people. And it's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. It's gone on far too long. Somebody's hurting poor people. And it's gone on far too long. And we won't be silent anymore. Yeah, we won't be silent anymore. And we won't be silent anymore.
All right, hey, yes. All right, now, to end our gathering tonight, I will, I will be saying, we're going to do this three times so you can kind of exercise your lungs here to close out your evening. And so I'm going to say, forward together. And your response will be, not one step back. All right, so here I go. Forward together. Forward together. Forward together. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. You're welcome.